Good evening and welcome to the January 7th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order of business roll call, starting on my far right.
President.
Capiello here.
Tessie, you're here.
Let's go here. And with us also is town planist surprise. We have James Jensen, the town zoning administrator, and Barbara Irvine, land use and planning administrative assistant. Pardon me. Next item, three is review approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2024. Anybody have any comments? Corrections, questions?
Make a motion to approve. Nope, sorry.
That's okay. I had discussed the meeting minutes with the, or the chairman had noticed that there was a mistake on page three of 15. The proposed change for 6.2.3.31C was to not remove the phrase for either detached. So it's just adding the word "not" in there. And that, that was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did we get a vote?
No.
I'm not making a motion now. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment noted.
I'll second. All right.
Mr. Shepherd.
Shepherd, aye.
Roll call.
Napa.
Stain, I wasn't here.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. Okay, next item is 234-57 and 57-2, the sub owners Edward Lemos and Mark and Marla E. Lemos. There was a request to continue this application to February 4th, 2025. Any comments? Anybody in the audience like to speak? Is there a motion to continue it?
I'll move that we continue the documents, as you noted, until February 3rd.
Fourth.
Fourth, excuse me.
Second.
2025.
Roll call. Shepherd, aye.
Napa.
Aye.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. And in addition to that, for anyone here that is for, on Mary Hill Road, this one is going to be continued to the 4th of December also. February 2025 also.
Which one?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to move it up in the agenda?
Yes, let's move that from, that's item number three, B3, to right after the one we just completed, which was A1. The motion, February.
Second.
I'll second.
Shepherd, aye.
Napa.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. And now, motion to continue it to the 4th of.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to continue to February 4th.
Second. Shepherd, aye. Napa.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. Okay, now we're in D1. Lot 220-54, seven units, 42, oops.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. For A2, I think is where we're at right now. Just continue the case that we, before we go to the new application.
Jumped ahead. Item number two, 244-5-gr-24, sub owner Robert E. Garland. Hello, good evening.
How are you? Good evening, I'm Steve Oles from Noria Plains. Back here again. We are looking at addressing the comments regarding wetlands that were brought up. I have provided photos, exhibits for driveway locations on the alternate location that was requested, on the opposite side of the property where we're proposing it. And the wetlands have been delineated along with two cemeteries that are on the property. So on the plan that you have, you will see. From that, you'll see in the photos I provided, my wife is standing in the first picture, 75 feet from the property line. And that is the line of sight as the turn goes left, and you do not have a line of sight from that intersection. So there's a safety issue. There's also a 15% slope issue when you're coming off the road into the site in the 75-foot alternate location that has been requested. So we can't even meet the town requirements of 10% or less.
Except you can regrade it, right? Rate it.
You're going to regrade half the site to get up it, because you have to go down the first 10 feet at a negative 1% slope, and then go up, and maintain under the 10% slope.
But aren't you doing that all the way up anyway?
Not, not on the entrance of trying to get off of Corbett Road. We're literally coming off of Corbett Road and we're not creating a greater than 15% slope natural rate. And then the last part would be to cross several hundred square feet of wetlands, if that is an alternate location that is requested. But that is a big, huge body of wetlands in that corner, where the location that I propose it, you're disturbing 75 square feet of wetlands. So this is the least impacting alternative, is in the location that I have proposed and shown on the plan.
But it could go to the left of the house by their driveway, right?
That is, the location as shown on the plan is the location of where it's going to be. That's where, the location on the driveway is where we proposed it to be.
I mean, it could go closer to their driveway and go all the way around the wetlands, right?
There's all kinds of scenarios, yes. But again, you're still crossing wetlands, you're still impacting wetlands.
Well, from what I see on this picture, if you come through here, you're not crossing wetlands.
We are crossing wetlands. Down the site.
It already has a crossing.
Sorry?
It already has a crossing.
It already has what was done by farmers in the back day of a perforated clay pipe that is underneath the ground, pulling the water from one side of the property to the other.
And it's moving water to the side of the property where you want to create the driveway.
The water to the pond on that side, and we are proposing to put the driveway across 75 square feet of wetlands. And we are proposing culverts underneath the driveway to drain it. So we're not hindering the flow of the property, or hindering the flow of the water.
So you're going to do the driveway right along the property line between the two? Right, right there. Right, right next to the property line.
Why is it better to go through the wetland than over the perforated pipe?
I'm sorry?
Why is it better to go through the wetlands and over the pipe that you just mentioned?
That pipe has been there before DES rules are in effect. So when it comes down to it, we're going to have to pull that pipe up, and we're going to be affecting wetlands at that point in time. And the design of the intent is to keep that side of the driveway.
Because essentially. I mean, essentially, there's wetlands through that whole lot.
Correct.
Right, so there's no way to get through the wetlands.
Well, it seems that there is.
There's no way to avoid it.
Go closer to the driveway.
Show me how that could happen, Scott, because I just see wetlands all across the property. But I think that's wetlands too, doesn't it?
Yeah, give me a look, I'll give it to Scott. It's just a culvert.
The wetlands, and you're putting a culvert in anyway. I know he doesn't want it near his house.
I said no, Scott, it's a larger plan.
At this point in time, we are having a discussion of an application that hasn't been accepted yet.
Right, yeah, we know that.
Okay.
Yep. That's on the agenda.
So if you come through here, there's no wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, the board could discuss the wetlands under the 9.6.
Which is a hardship.
Okay.
Because that's.
I mean, today, the law is pretty clear.
Well, we discuss this when we get to the 9.6, which is coming up. So first, we want to do the waiver. Which is on the front page. So the applicant is asking for a waiver from 5.3.1, print C's 9, a waiver for all wetlands on the lot. A portion of the wetlands has been flagged in regard to the proposed lot. The remaining lot has already been developed and the wetland area is not flagged for this portion. Is there a motion to grant the waiver?
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind for the language to prove of the waiver, or I can read it.
Oh, sure. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Or specific circumstances related relative to the subdivision, or conditions of the land in such subdivision indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation. Going to open it to public comment. Anybody have a comment on granting this waiver?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak on the waiver for this application only at this point? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand, we'll give you a moment. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to comment on the waiver of this application.
Closing public comment. There are motion to grant the waiver. I'll make that motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Shepherd, no.
Here with me one second.
I think Stain is going to ask a question about, the waiver says to all wetlands, so, I mean, he just really needs a waiver on a portion of the wetlands, right?
Yeah, I think a lot of it was in the area that you see that is not relevant to this, all of this area.
Right.
It's not relevant to the case.
Yeah, that's section 5.3.1, is for the wetlands in all of the lot.
What is he actually asking for?
Is asking for a portion of the wetland that has been flagged in regards to proposed lot. The remaining lot is already developed and the wetland areas are not flagged on this portion.
The waiver for all.
In other words, anything that might be on the 26.78 acres of the parent parcel.
But it specifically says applicant is asking for a waiver from 5.1, parents 9, waiver to all wetlands on the lot. A portion of the wetlands has been flagged in regard to this lot. Remaining lot is already developed, area, areas not flagged to that portion. I, my struggle with that is, we're having a whole conversation about what that, the lot potentially looks like and the layout, and which will directly impact the, directly impact the outcome of the application.
If I can interject, all the wetlands in the, in the lot. I'll go back to look at.
If I may address.
Wait a minute, would you just clarify that again? So you're asking for something?
All the delineation, I originally asked for.
Yeah, it was originally, this is from the original language.
Yeah.
That was my intent.
Okay.
Based upon last meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Chomping over the.
Oh, okay, that's what this waiver is about.
Yeah, so the waiver, the waiver language was not updated from the applicant, from the original submitter. So that was the original submitter language, and we.
Yeah, okay, I could leave it at that.
Can we correct it in the?
That's what I was going to say, if the board wants him to correct it, have a form, or we can correct it on his, correct it on his sheet.
Yeah, let's just correct it.
Okay.
Right, I, my feeling out is, if we're going to accept it, then it is corrected in the acceptance of it.
Not a hardship.
I explained it, it's on record.
I mean, he was very specific when first came up. He didn't want it near the house. That's not a hardship.
That'll be the next.
That's the next part. This is just on the waiver.
Yeah. Just on the delineation of the wet. My, my proposal will be, if we're going to accept a waiver on it, that the waiver language states that, that nothing from the, the rear lot line back needs to be delineated, of the proposed lot needs to be delineated.
That's fine.
And you're in agreement?
Does that make everybody?
Yeah.
The proposal.
Yeah, everybody's fine.
Okay, is there a motion to grant the waiver?
Make the motion.
As amended?
Oh, you already did, okay.
As amended.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Napa.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. Next, we have a vote for the application to be complete. Is there a motion to grant, accept the application as complete? Make a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Shepherd.
Napa.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye. I'm going to open a public comment at this time. Any comments by anyone?
Is there anybody online that would make, like to make public comment for or against this application? If so, please raise your hand or take yourself off mute, we'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that'd like to speak for or against this application on my comment.
At this time, the applicant is seeking a 9.6. Oh, it was a public comment. Any discussion on the 9.6 special permit?
I think I've said it.
Okay, is there a motion to grant the 9.6 special permit?
Mr. Chairman, do you need to go over the application?
No, you can read the request. Do you have it handy? Read the request for the 9.6?
I find my copy. Which part would you like me to read, sir?
Start. Definitely give the justification.
Yeah, keeping the intent.
Yeah. Starts number one. Second page.
The proposed use for a driveway is through buffer of a single-family residential lot. Number two, is that what you want me to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Number two, this is the least impacting alternative with minimal impacts to surrounding wetlands, meeting town driveway design standards. Number three. Sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, number three, proposed driveway location is the most direct and least impacting location to the wetlands and wetland buffers. Number four, silt sock and silt fence will be installed before work is started and removed once driveway is constructed and site is stabilized. Number five, all impacts will be restored once driveway is constructed. Number six, silt sock and silt fence will be installed during construction. Two 18-inch culverts will be placed to allow for water flow between the wetland pockets to minimize adverse impacts.
I'm going to open this to a public comment on the 9.6. Anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody online?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for the 9.6 for or against it on this application? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand, we'll give you a moment. Mr. Chairman, announce anybody that likes to speak for or against the 9.6.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the 9.6 special permit?
I have a question first. So have you subdivided this already? It says proposed, so it's not been subdivided.
No.
So lines could be redrawn. So you could theoretically come in where you're saying, and go around the wetlands and come back over to this proposed lot. Could leave the lot line. Yeah, I'm, I'm saying you could go off to what would be my left and go around the, the wetlands. Yeah. Come back in.
Statistically, that could happen. But that is now taking what's going to stay in the woods and now bring it into the field that Mr. Garland would prefer not to see.
There's going to be a substantial wetland impact there either way, right, going through?
We're impacting 74, 75 square feet of wetlands.
Has the Conservation Commission weighed in on this?
Yes, they have.
I think I saw that somewhere.
Yeah.
I believe we have the representative here. Could I ask for his input or opinion?
I believe they wrote a memo, they had no issue.
Yeah.
We didn't speak specifically to the 9.6.
You have to go to the mic, sorry.
Doug Bogan, Chair Conservation Commission. We didn't look specifically at the 9.6, although we understood that that's where the driveway would be going through, and it didn't seem like there was, you know, a viable alternative. But we haven't done an analysis, as we might do in this case, but that's where it stands. So we don't, don't really have any comment to offer at this point. And we only meet this Thursday, so with holidays and all, we haven't had a chance to meet to discuss it, so.
And I think that's my, my question, is if you folks ran it through your analysis, how much of a difference does it make if they change the lot line and move it to the other side of the pond where they don't have to impact both the wetland and potentially the buffers, as opposed to potentially just impacting?
Still impacting buffers.
I, as I was just saying, I said, you will still have a, potentially a buffer impact, but you're not impacting the wetland.
Again, you will be impacting the wetlands that's inside the culvert that needs to be admitted by DES. That was done before the 60s, so that had to get ripped up, the culvert in, and new impact would have to be done.
That's not 8,000 square feet though, or linear feet? For the culvert?
No, no, no.
The fact that he's asking for 75 square feet.
75, I thought it was 70, 7,300 or something.
No.
It almost sounds like it'd be more disruptive to get up the. 8,000 and 15,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, I knew it was more than 75.
No, it was 75 square feet.
No, it's 8,000.
8,000 square feet of buffer.
Yeah.
But you're saying 75 square feet of wetland.
With the proposed location, yes.
Thank you.
All we have, so.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to grant the 9.6 special permit, if there's any seconds out here. I'll second it. Okay. Roll call.
Shepherd, no.
Currently, I do not believe it means 9.6, parents 1, so no.
Since it's only 75 square feet, I'm going to vote.
Tessie, you're aye.
I'll vote yes.
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to add anything to the notice of decision?
So I, I guess there will be no more development on this property, right? That would be the agreement. Because I don't want them to come back and ask for this, and then come back later and say, well, we're going to subdivide the rest of it, and have a house put back there using a driveway that does conform.
We can do it.
Can't do that.
Can't do that. Good state statute.
Mr. Chairman, aye?
Please.
Mr. Shepherd, you are making an impact to a wetland for a lot. Why wouldn't you want them to use the same exact spot if they're going to develop it further? It would make the most sense. It would be incomprehensible to think you'd want to restrict development based on nothing.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you were to move the driveway over to minimize the impact on the wetland, that would be one way to go. But what I don't want to do is have this, what I was trying to avoid, was having a driveway that goes through the wetlands here, and then they come back at a subsequent time and say, now we want to subdivide the other one, and we're going to put a driveway through the place.
Sure. If DES gives them a wetland crossing, they wouldn't even need a 9.6. They'd get a crossing through the wetland, and they'd by right have access to that land. So, I mean, I think they're doing us a, being polite and asking if he's got to get a wetland crossing anyways. But just to, to restrict further development on every lot that comes in front of you seems onerous and outside the purview of this board.
Also, the Garlands have owned it since the early 60s, and they still own it, so you're talking 60-plus years, and this one five-acre lot is going to the grandson, stay within the family.
If there's anything further to add to the notice of decision, Chair.
Is there a motion to grant the notice of decision? Can I already go down that?
Not for the notice of. Just for the 9.6. Seems like it's a given, then. Go ahead with this.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead, I'll second it. Okay. I, I move with a notice of decision for case file 2445-gr-24, so. For conditional approval.
Then I'll second that.
Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Napa.
Capiello, aye.
Tessie, you're aye.
Let's go aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Good luck with your project.
It wasn't easy, thank you. I know it wasn't easy.
Next, we have a new application. 220-54-7 units, 42 and 43. Owner Robert Barish, pressed by the applicant for a minor site plan for units 42 and 43 to utilize for change of use space for Hampshire trike within 3,000-square-foot warehouse building with six parking spaces at 116 and 118, Isenglass Circle in the regional commercial district. Anybody here to speak to this?
Robert Barish is here.
Oh, oh, hello.
Hello.
Please, you have any opening comments or description of what you'd like to do?
Yeah, so I think, I don't know if Vanessa can... The first thing I'd like to do is show you what I'm working with. I did, I did get a chance to see someone's concern about what I was planning to do, and I believe if I wasn't very aware of exactly what I was trying to do and I was in a butter, I think my concerns would have been exactly the same. So if you can see what I'm working with, this is not going to be a, all different kinds of machines. This is one type of machine. I don't know if you guys can see it as I'm seeing it?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So those are Robaco trike. They come three-seater like that red one or a two-seater like that yellow one. There's a couple of different variations. Those are the two biggest ones. They come in all kinds of colors. They're not anything like a traditional motorcycle. I did send on two videos because one of the concerns, and it would have been mine, too, is that am I going to be hearing hot rods going up and down, even though it's not a residential street, but even still, I don't, I don't think I'd want to. So I sent two videos to kind of give you an idea on the sound that they make. These aren't, because they're not Harleys, this is not for that group, even though, believe me, I've been part of that group for almost fifty years, so, and, but that's not what these things are. So my plan is, overall, and I believe I wrote it down, tried to explain it, but, is that basically, in order to do this, in order to satisfy the company's needs, I need to have a place where it's set up primarily just to show these things. So I'm going to, you know, in my unit, I'll be able to fit three to five, three is the magic number of these machines in there so they can be viewed and seen. But my market plan, my business plan, actually, is to, to actually go to the people. So basically, it's meet them at lunch at work, meet them at home, because these things need to be seen. They need to be seen by me driving down the road. They need to be seen by the neighbor at that person's house. They need to be seen that. Here comes one video. I don't know if there's sound on your end. I hope so. Play that.
If we have sound. If you try to do it, because it's on my computer, I don't know if it... That's in background. It's not me. I don't know if everybody can hear that.
Well, if you turn it up too loud, it's going to sound like a UFO, so I guess, the main thing, I guess, is that I've seen, you know, Mustangs and Corvettes leave dealerships a lot louder than these things are, but they are in the same, similar range. They're, you know, you know they're there, but they're by no means a, a hot rod, you know, with no baffles in the muffler type thing. Definitely built for a more, I would say, older crowd, more sophisticated, and I don't mean that above anybody else, just people looking for certain, they're not a ten thousand dollar machine. But what I was saying before is that to, in order for the dealership to work with the company that provides the equipment, the machines, is I need at least a thousand square feet. For the state to make them happy, it's along those same lines as far as having a business. And then the only prerequisite also that the state has is that either I provide inspections or have an arrangement with a inspection station, which I do, or actually, I do have the arrangement set up. The paperwork isn't signed yet because I haven't gone that far with DMV yet, but it's with St. Halaire right across the street. So I'm not looking to create a disturbance. It's not my environment. I own a business in Dover that I'm very much all about, you know, being a server and, you know, serving the public, so I'm not looking to make enemies with my neighbors. The, the main reason I need it is I need it for storage. I need it to keep them safe and, and secure and dry and pretty and everything else. The business plan is also going to be one customer at a time, and literally, one customer at a time. If they are going to be coming to me to look at them, then it'll be by appointment only. That's where it's going to be from day one and for the foreseeable future. I can't imagine I would change it because I'm looking to control my time doing it. And other than that, I do apologize that I'm not extremely prepared with paperwork. I'm actually in Henderson, Nevada, right now, visiting my granddaughter, who I didn't see for Christmas, and I actually left the paperwork right on the counter at home where it wasn't supposed to be. So I, I can't go back and look at some of my notes, but if there's any questions, I can be glad to answer them. And any concerns, of course.
Okay, I'm going to open it to comment by the board, if they have any questions for you.
Let us say, I, I, go ahead, George.
No, no, go ahead. You start.
You know, I looked at the condo rules, because I'm like, this must be under the condo rules. And the condo rules say no overnight parking and no storage of trailers. So I think the butter who was complaining and said that they wanted to shut it off overnight, it just seems like they're not allowed to have the trailers there overnight, which is, I think, what the problem was. And the only thing I'll mention here is that it just said no junk vehicles, which they defined as non-operating. So it doesn't sound like you're doing repair of them, which would make them non-operable, so I...
That's correct, also.
That doesn't matter.
So my question was, it seems that people will want to drive these when they come to look at them, so there will be traffic up and down the circle?
Well, we obviously would have to leave. These are not going to be turned loose when, when the fact that it's one person at a time, it's not going to be a full parking lot or, or a whole plethora of people. Majority of the time, like I said, my plan is to actually have these seen, not even on-site. But if they do come on-site and they do get taken out, they will be taken out with me. So there's not going to be any hot rodding or, or anything like that, not because I'm in that neighborhood or not because I'm trying to get, you know, a change of use through. It's because I just wouldn't allow it. I mean, it doesn't, that's why I said, just not what I'm trying to do. So, and I don't, I don't foresee the traffic being that great, even though when it comes to, you know, having the property a certain way, up until a month ago, I never had anything out on my apron, and now my plow, my plow attachment is there because obviously the time of year. I do own a trailer and I keep it inside. So like I said, I'm looking to keep it that way. The whole gated community, I hope we put a gate in there. I would love to have it locked down overnight and on the weekends and everything else. But as far as the day-to-day, the coming and the going, the traffic is just not going to be that kind of traffic because it's just not the business plan I'm working on. And it's, it's not going to be, you know, going around the oval like it's some kind of a track. Where my unit's located, I literally bypass, I think, four buildings leaving and the same four coming in. The, I just don't see that being a hindrance. And as often as I am there, I don't really, I mean, I've come in contact with quite a few people there. I've met a few other people there. I know there are some folks there that have their man caves, which I think is awesome. This was not my plan when I bought this. This, this is just something that's happened in this past year. So I don't believe it'll have the impact that, to the neighborhood that some people might think, especially since it's not going to be, you know, large groups hanging around outside or inside. You know, this is, you know, if it's going to draw a crowd, it's going to draw a crowd at, you know, at somebody's house or somebody's plant, place of work or, or I, and obviously, my marketing plan is to take it places where it does get seen a whole bunch. But the fact of the matter is, is that I already own the building. It's nice and clean and safe, and it's just where I want to keep this, these things, and probably where, pretty much, one of the most important is where my filing cabinet will be when, you know, to do the paperwork on the sales of these things.
I just have one more question. Like, can you estimate how many customers per day and per week would come through this?
Well, I would, no, I would love to say, you know, five or six or seven a day, you know, six days a week. But the reality is, as far as coming and going, my, my plan was if I had five in a week, I think I would be overly successful. Because by the time we get to that part of them coming in to me, you know, this is not, you know, like I said, no one's going to just walk in and take it for a test drive because they think it's cool. There's a little bit more to it than that. And, but I would say if I had five to ten a week, I would be thrilled. I do think it's probably around the five to seven mark, and that's probably wouldn't even be starting until May or June, probably only last till September, maybe October at most, you know, for those warm months. After that, there's different ways that I'll be attacking the market, but it won't be from customers coming and going. It'll be more from the physical marketing that I'm doing in different parts of the country where, where there are events going on that people in New England do go to, and that gives me an excuse to have a good time and put some smiles on people's faces.
I believe the challenge is this was never permitted as retail space. It was specifically marketed as storage space, man cave space, things of that nature, not retail.
Right. And now we've already granted two retails, knives and guns.
Yeah. I sort of wish we hadn't gone that.
I don't know if I was here for those.
Oh. Something about somebody leaving the barn door open or something. Any more questions?
Yeah, I just don't know if I would continue a practice that was never an approved use.
I know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address the board, too?
Sure.
So when we initially had people coming in for retail sales, that's what the board had agreed, like, not to have a blanket retail sales, that each person could have a unique...
I think that we talked about a unique use. I do not remember retail ever being part of that conversation.
Because I know for the knife was e-commerce majority, he needed to have an address and a space, so it was, that's when it would retail and have parking for people.
The distributor required that he have a space.
And I think that was along the same lines as for the gun thing, but most of their patrons were online, or only by appointment only.
I'll ask the zoning administrator, is there anybody, any complaints about the two retail operations that were allowed?
No, I have not received any complaints from any people or any businesses down there.
I presume there's a condo association with these units, is that correct?
Are you asking me?
In the master agreement?
Yes, and I didn't find anything that's specific.
Just going through my notes here.
Yeah.
And I noticed there are cameras on the buildings, and you know you have, what, a couple outside and a few inside?
Correct.
Structure. So you're talking about three to five models in the building. There will not be any outside displays, correct?
I don't, no. I mean, I have no desire, I have no desire to do that. I will not do that. I've, I've had both of these units for a couple of years. I, I haven't, the, the business plan has, I, there's no advantage for me to have these things sitting outside for any length of time. There's, it's not, I do amount...
There's no traffic going through that would see them anyway, so that doesn't make any sense, right?
I think that's all.
That's my point, is that, yeah, that would be just a waste of time. This, this really isn't...
I drove through there, and there are things parked outside of buildings. There's a dump truck not too close to you and some of the construction equipment.
That's the one right across from me, and that, and now see, I, so I consider myself a pretty decent neighbor. I've helped out my neighbors a few times with helping them with little things here and there. I'm pretty sure that there are things that take place there now that I'm pretty sure they, if I was to open up the, up to the rules and stuff, that pretty much eighty percent of my neighbors are breaking them. And, but they're not breaking them in a way that's offensive or, or making me feel like my property value is dropping or anything like that. There was an instance last year, year and a half ago, where I made mention to the people that are actually still handling the, oh my God. What word am I looking for? The association, handling the association. And actually, I was told when I made the phone call that they were already addressing it, that they saw that, they saw what I saw. And I said, good, I just, I just didn't want to get so far out of hand that we have to go back up so far. I only do it the way I do it, probably because of what's in there. Now, the things I've stored in there over the years, you know, I mean, up until early this year, I had a, you know, a half a million dollar motorhome stored in one of them, you know, so I'm all about what's in there is precious. I mean, I'm not looking to create that, anything different there. But absolutely nothing outside is any benefit to me. The only thing I know I have to do, and this is because of the, the state and DMV stuff, is I will need to put up a sign, and according to the state, the sign has to be ten-inch letters. I don't even want to do that, but I was advised by the town, actually by somebody who knows a whole bunch, that the state will have to acquiesce to the town or what the town's rules are on the signage. So therefore, I'll have a very simple, tiny sign like the knife guy does, just a little single hanging off the building, and that I'm okay with. Because like I said, I'm not looking to draw advertising to the building, other than if somebody was driving down because they had an appointment with me, because I just tell them, drive straight in, second building on the right. When they see the little sign, they know that they're in the right place. That's about the extent of what I plan on doing outside the building.
Okay. So there'll be no test drives on the property? The only thing will be if somebody comes and you take them for a ride, you'll just leave the property?
Oh my God, yeah, yeah, that, that oval.
I'm just going through the list here.
Yeah, no, that...
And I had a question on storage of flammable, just a small amount of gasoline, I guess you keep on.
No, well, nothing, if it's not in a vehicle, I'm not storing gasoline on, on the property.
Okay.
I, I think I'm, you know, I used to be on the fire department in Burke, Maine for a few years, and...
The fire department would want to look at that, too.
I, I don't want anything to do with that, so no. There, there's not going to be any hazardous material whatsoever. It's no different than I was storing, you know, my, you know, my, my hot rod car or whatever else, that I know there's a bunch of them there, which I think is great, but, but no, there'll be no, no extra fuel of any type kicking around.
And I think you mentioned in your notes that the, generally, they would be, once you, you know, consummate a deal, the factory will ship directly to the customer rather than to you?
That is, that is an option, or, or they can actually have them come to me, which is pretty much a very easy drop-off on a place like that, where, and then I would either deliver it because I also have a trailer that can, an enclosed trailer that, you know, will take care of the rest of that. But yes, the, the deliveries can be made and set up to be brought right to their door.
Okay.
Which I would do is, obviously, it would behoove me to do that as much as humanly possible. But if I didn't, there's still definitely easy ways around that. And, and just so you're aware, once again, if I sell anywhere from, we'll say fourteen to twenty-two of these a year, I would be in my glory. I'd be, I would be profitable, and it would give me time to still control my schedule and to keep things sustainable over and over again. So it's not, I'm not trying to sell hundreds of these things because the fact is, is that it's a very niche market. I'm very aware of it. I happen to be in the luxurious position of I don't have to make a million dollars into doing this. It's more of a, this, not, well, anyway, this past year, I had helped put three people on motorcycles that were, thought they'd never ride, and because of their age and their insecurities of it, and, and two out of three of them put more miles on their bikes than I did on mine, so I didn't think that was very fair, but I thought it was very cool. And this particular one, I think, will outdo that as far as the, the joy of it. So I think there's a lot of people that are hesitant to put their knees in the breeze due to balancing and clutching and shifting and all that kind of stuff, where these machines are fully automatic. I mean, you, you put it reversed and their backup camera comes on, on the dashboard, just like a car. There's no shifting and clutching and anything like that. It's just a, it's just an amazing machine that I think is going to bring a lot of joy to a lot of people.
Okay, thank you. You are requesting a waiver. I guess I will read the waiver. The applicant, the requirement to have all site plans shall be prepared and stamped by a professional engineer. Groundry monument shall be certified by a licensed surveyor per section three... Boundary monument shall be certified by a licensed surveyor per section 3.1.1 of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Uh, at this point, I'll open public comment on the waiver. Does anybody like to speak to that waiver? Any online?
Is there anybody online that'd like to speak for or against the waiver at this point for this application? I'll give you a moment to respond by either unmuting yourself or raising your hand. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to comment on the waiver for this application.
Okay, I'm closing public comment. Make a motion, anybody want to make a motion to grant that waiver?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Joyce Capiello, roll call please.
Shepherd eye.
Napa eye.
Capiello eye.
Tessie, your eye?
Uh, Driscoll eye. And now we'll vote on the applic- is, the application is, is complete. Uh, we'll open public comment on that. Oh, right, don't have to vote, okay. Uh, motion to, uh, seconded? Seconded, Scott, okay, roll call.
Shepherd eye.
Napa eye.
Capiello eye.
Tessie, your eye?
Driscoll eye.
Uh, I'm going to open the public comment. Anybody have any comment on this application? Just raise your hands.
Mr. Chairman, before we go online, I just wanted to note that there, um, the land use office did receive an email, um, from a Mr. Killiam. Um, I've shared that information with the board. Um, and his concern was that it is, he was, that he thought it was a zoning change. Um, I clarified that it was a, um, change of use. And, but he still did not support the application.
Okay. Uh, nobody online?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application? If so, um, please unmute yourself or raise your hands. Give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to, uh, comment on the.
Okay, I'll close up a comment. Um, any issues that the board has or would like to discuss before we, uh, vote on the notice of decision? Hearing none?
Just, I was going to say, just what I've already addressed is that that was not what is, what a permitted use was when this was permitted.
Right.
I was looking at the rules as well.
Okay, anybody would like to add anything to the notice of decision based on, based on what's, okay?
Um. Can you stipulate that his, if his business is indeed more than what he said about seven visits a week, that that's, come back?
Maximum of seven visits a week?
Or, or, or something, 10, 12.
With the hours of.
But that did not become a full retail. Has that?
Yeah.
If he would like, if.
Yeah, would the applicant agree to those terms?
I'm sorry, it, it, I, 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 I could barely hear. Uh, it has something to do with the, uh, amount of, uh.
Yeah, maximum of seven visits per week, for example.
Um.
They would have, he'd have to come back for the planning board.
I, I tell you, I, um, I, I, I don't, I don't think I'd have a problem. Uh, I, I mean, I, I say, let's make it 10 because I did say between 7 and 12. I don't even think it's going to be 10, but I wouldn't want to say 7 and have somebody have a counter on me and it went to 10 or 9. Um, if for some reason, uh, it, it, it changes down the road where I literally see, I'm, I'm saying no, because I have no problem saying, you know, no, or come next week, or I'll come to you, you know?
So 10 would be okay?
I thought, I think, I, I think, honestly, I think 7 would be okay. But I figure if we can agree to 10, at least it might be a long time before I have to ask for a bigger number, if at all.
Okay. Joyce said okay and 10.
Would it have a consensus?
I don't know, what do you think?
I don't even need a number, so.
Oh, I'm getting a smile.
Yeah.
I need more than that, I'm sorry for record.
It's going to be six days a week.
I got a yes, I got, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
And I got.
Well, why don't I make it as a proposal and we can vote on it and it goes up or down?
That'd be easier.
So I would move that we would accept this application with the amendment that, uh, he needs to come back if it's more than, um, 10 customers a week. So does anyone have a second?
We have to vote on that addition, right?
Since nobody's given me an answer.
Yeah, you need to second. That actually was a motion. I, I'm seconding, roll call.
Oh, you're seconding, okay.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not sure I agree it's needed, but you said okay, so I'll say yes.
I think the number is really irrelevant because I don't agree with that. It's changing use, so, no.
Well, yes.
I guess it won't make a difference, so I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Right.
It doesn't mean.
I was going to vote no, no, no limit.
Was that the vote?
It wouldn't have mattered if you guys would have voted.
I thought it was just bad.
So basically, I'm putting a limit on it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Now I need a motion to grant the notice of decision.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I, I.
Motion to grant the notice of decision.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Shepherd eye.
Yep, no.
Capiello eye.
Tessie, your eye?
Driscoll eye.
Okay. Uh, okay. Okay. This is your all set?
Mr. Barrisher, all set. Um, the final vote was four to one, the motion passes.
Well, thank you very much, I, and I, I won't, I'll make sure nobody regrets it.
Take care.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, take care.
You too, bye bye.
Finally, we have. Next we have 256 dash 23 dash and 25 dash GR dash 25 dash LL. Owner Kenneth Dudzik, revocable trust. Request by the applicant with waivers for a minor subdivision to revise the boundary lines between two lots to recreate the original Shady Lane subdivision lot. Uh, this will result in lot 23 being, um, 1,341,661 square feet, 30.80 acres in size, and lot 25 being 80,007 square feet, 1.84 acres in size. If there's anything else here.
I have a question before we begin.
Go ahead.
Can, was this based on the, um, application date? Hadn't we already proposed changing the lot sizes? So wouldn't the lot line adjustment need to comply that, with the potential change in the zoning requirements since now we're in that window where things get fuzzy?
Um, no. So when, that happens when it's actually posted and advertised and it was posted and advertised on December 24th. Um, so that's when.
That was the moment everything was submitted and, and processed? Or it was proposed and accepted by the board?
This was received on the 18th. This is going to, this is going to be. The purpose of.
Well, we didn't, we did as a board.
All right, uh, the site is located on 44, uh, Shady Lane in France Road, map 256, lots 23 and 25, in a general residential zoning district. By Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering. Hello, how are you?
I'm well, how are you, sir? Mr. Chair members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the Dudzik family, uh, here this evening. Uh, in addition, uh, to the Dudzik family, uh, with me tonight is Dwayne Hyde from Southeast Land Trust. And a number of these gentlemen are from the, uh, Water District. Uh, and they both have an interest in, uh, this potential lot line revision. Um, so, uh, I will try and keep this as short and sweet as possible. The Dudzik family has a lot that has frontage and a home on Shady Lane and, uh, has various other lots, uh, that, uh, don't have frontage, uh, are non-conforming in other, uh, various ways. And so all we're asking to do is change a lot line between, uh, one of the lots and this frontage lot so that we're essentially restoring the boundary line, uh, of the original created frontage lot, uh, as part of the Shady Lane subdivision. Um, this will, uh, take and transfer 21, approximately 21 acres, uh, from one piece of marooned backland to another piece of marooned backland. Uh, and in so doing, we're creating a pedestrian easement across the, uh, frontage lot so that people can have, uh, public access to the, to the remaining parcel as part of, uh, the project. We've done, uh, limited wetlands, uh, work, uh, within the area. We wanted to prove that the building area that, uh, remains, uh, is adequate and we've, uh, conducted enough topography on the site to, to demonstrate that topographic features are adequate also. We do have, uh, two waivers before the board. One is for building envelope. Uh, we wouldn't want to demonstrate a building envelope, um, that may or may not be adequate, uh, accurate. Um, so if you just show building setbacks around, uh, 20 acres of land, it may or may not be accurate. We'd rather not, uh, show something that's false. And then, uh, the 5.3 dot 1.9 natural features, uh, wetlands of the entire parcel. Again, the developed parcel, we wanted to ensure that enough wetlands are shown so that if they're affected by this lot line revision or affected by lot size, uh, we wanted to make sure that they were demonstrated on the plan. Other than that, I have nothing new to add.
Okay, any comments by the board?
I'm just confused about the purpose of it. So can you show where the, um, the, the walkway is and what it's connecting to?
So it's, uh, it's a pedestrian easement. I don't even think it'll be a protected walkway. Uh, it's 15 feet wide and it's on this. And that way pedestrians can.
I would like to see that. Hold on, hold on. Yeah, sorry, you have to address the board.
Oh, I didn't.
All right.
I'll put it up on the screen up here too. Just give me a moment.
Okay.
Chris, I'm just curious, why was it changed before? You, you say you're going back to the original.
Well, um, it, the parcel, there was an original frontage lot as part of the Shady Lane subdivision. Then these other parcels have been collected, uh, from various parties over the years. These are very old lots, um, that came from the original range lots in town. In fact, you can see a lot of the monuments on the plan are literally stone piles or granite pillars. Um, so a- at some point, this lot was sort of merged with one of those parcels and now we're, we're breaking that off. And that way, this parcel, um, will be added to the collective and then there's a higher purpose that's, uh, envisioned for this land.
So this was necessary before you can give this to the Water District?
I'm not supposed to say that at the podium.
Can you say, is this conserve land that we're getting, that the public will get access to?
That's the idea, yes.
I'll open public comment in a moment, okay?
They're going to be in public.
You can hold that from public comment, okay? Any more questions before we look at the waivers? First waiver, requested waivers from the applicant are Article 5.3.1, parentheses 9, natural features, wetlands. The applicant has requested a waiver to show all wetland areas on the site. Uh, language to include, uh, include an approval of the waiver board. Um, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Let me read part two also. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
We have to do each one, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Any comment on the waivers before I open to public comment? Hearing none, I will open it to public comment. Anybody like to speak on the waiver before we go to general discussion?
Is there anybody?
Sure, well, you have to come up to talk. For clarification purposes.
So I never had a chance to see where the.
This is just on the waiver to grant the waiver.
Okay.
About wetlands. That they don't have to delineate them. I'll open it later for comments on general comments.
Okay, then I would.
Have to get rid of the waiver first.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
Anybody online?
Is there anybody online that, um, would like to speak for or against for the waiver on the wetlands of the site?
On the waiver? Okay, come forward. Uh, just name and address, please.
Name is, uh, Greg Cole. Uh, I would just like to know more about the intended use of the land before I make a comment on the waiver.
Can, can you come to the podium so I can pick up your name and address, please?
Uh, Greg Cole at 70 Shady Lane. Um, I would just like to, uh, know more about the intended use of the land before I make a comment on the waiver because I do have a budding land, uh, that potentially has wetlands crossing into my land.
Okay. That is not a comment on the waiver.
Yeah. Um, so the applicant is asking a waiver, um, on his plan to not show all of the wetland deline- delineation of, um, of the entire lot.
Right, but some of the delineated wetland would cross over into my, my property as well.
Any comments?
Uh, it's the board's discretion on whether they want to. I don't think that is the applicant's responsibility to delineate wetlands on their neighbors' properties. Um, unless there's proposed development.
Any comments by the board?
I don't know if you wanted to.
I, I was just going to ask, um, if, I, I missed if you, what, what is your concern with it?
I don't know the intent of the use of the land.
It's, it's a landlocked parcel.
Landlocked parcel, so.
Development potential for that parcel.
No, if that's the case.
From traditional development.
That kind of alleviates my concern then.
Well, there's no development potential currently in its configuration coming off Shady Lane. However, if it were sold to somebody else that has access or potential, there is the possibility then at that point.
If, you know, hypothetically, if it were to be given to somebody else closer to the lake and made part of that parcel.
I think we're just addressing the waiver at this point.
Yeah.
Right.
Try to stick to the waiver, sorry.
Thank you, Vanessa.
I'm just trying to make sure I can provide some clarity to that.
I understand.
Based on what he's asking, but I, I can't say one way or the other.
Right. Well, when we get into general discussion, maybe we can clarify this a little bit, so, thank you. Nobody's online.
John?
Can I get you a water?
Can't do it. Um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to point out something. Something that might be obvious to a few of us from less obvious to others is that the way we're going about this expressly prohibits future development in the future. In fact, it takes, it takes away the potential for development. We're removing its frontage access. Uh, we're not providing a very wide access area. Um, so I think it's, in its design, it's limiting development substantially. I'm not saying that it couldn't be sold to somebody else that has 4,000 feet of frontage somewhere, somewhere, but that's not the intent here.
Okay, no other comments, uh, on the waiver? I'll close wait, now, public comments.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
Seconded by me. I was just saying, so call.
Shepherd eye.
Napa eye.
Capiello eye.
Tessie, your eye?
Driscoll eye.
Next we have a second waiver, Article 5.3.2, parentheses 18, building envelope. Applicant is requesting a waiver to show all building envelopes and setbacks. Um, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Um. I'm going to open public comment on this waiver.
Is there anybody online that would like to... Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against the building envelope waiver only at this point? If so, please raise your hand or go off mute. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, is there anybody online that would like to speak?
Okay. I'm closing public comment. Is there a motion to grant this waiver?
I'll move to grant this waiver.
I'll second it based on the fact that not, as we say, not granting it would pose an unnecessary hardship, since the building is already there and in place. It's not...
Roll call?
Shepherd eye.
Napa.
Kepi yellow eye.
Tess, your eye?
Wuscalaw. Next, we have to vote. The application is complete. Then, we'll open it to public comment for everybody. Is there a motion to grant the application is complete?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to grant application.
And public comment section...
If you just wait a minute.
I opened it to the waiver.
Ma'am, that's not what's happening.
Well, this is why I need to explain it.
We have to accept the application is complete in order to open it to the public for you folks to comment. Accepting the application is complete is not accepting the application or approving the application.
No, we're not approving anything. This is just to, just to get the paperwork officially onto our desk, that's all. It's state law. Talk to your rep. Okay.
Shepherd eye.
Wait, sorry. Who made the motion?
I motion to accept the application is complete.
And Shepherd's...
Was I?
Napa.
Kepi yellow eye.
Tess, your eye?
Wuscalaw. Okay, application. Now, I'm going to open to public comment on anything you want to say about this.
Yeah, limited to three minutes, but...
Hi, Dave Totti, 45 Shady Lane. Most of you are my neighbors. You have some concerns. In addition to being your neighbor at 45 Shady Lane, I'm the commissioner of the Swainslake Village Water District, which is off a stated road off of Hall Road. And we operate a district, a water district there with two wells that supply water to about 100 houses plus a campground on Hall Road. The land that's in question is being purchased by the Water District. Water District wants to purchase the land in order to create wellhead protection. Our intent, our hope, would be to never develop it. The lot's being drawn, so that it's, it's, it would be very hard to develop it, as long as the district owns it.
Do you have the microphone near you?
Little close. Sure, sure, sure.
You can pick it up. You can pick it up. Whatever's good for you.
Do a little song and dance, too? Yeah. And I'm sorry, I know I should be addressing the board, because it's your meeting, but the concerns are coming from my neighbors, and I thought I could allay their concerns probably a little quicker instead of...
Obviously, we're a little loosey-goosey here, so...
Thank you very much. So, the intent is to provide wellhead protection. We want to buy the land so that it doesn't get developed. The project is supported by Barrington Conservation. The project was supported by the Select Board. The project is being funded by the Department of Environmental Services in the state of New Hampshire, all of which is money coming together to protect that land. It's, the only biggest change is right next to your house and the former Dudzik house, right by my mailbox, there's a 15-foot easement, which would be a footpath. So, if any of you wanted to walk out into that property, you could.
Right. You have to come up and speak up here.
Yeah, so you have to have back and forth. You have to address the board. That's the...
So, I will...
Thank you, folks.
Hi, my name's John, and I, we are butting the house next to where you want the path, right?
Get closer to the mic, please. Name and address.
Your last name.
John Fodeo, 52 Shady Lane. And where you're going to put the path is, there'll be traffic, and there'll be more cars parking there, and, you know, that's a pretty quiet part of the neighborhood. And I don't know if I really want all the public going back and forth in and out through my, you know, walking alongside my property. I don't know. You know, it's, it's, there'll be people parking on my side of the yard.
Chances are, it's just going to be neighbors. I mean, I don't think they're going to advertise that this is a, you know...
And is there any plan to do parking?
There's no parking, no signage. Okay, yeah, it's stipulated, there's no signage there.
Okay.
So, it's not like we're inviting the public to come out there.
That was my concern.
Okay.
Was, you know...
They're not going to advertise it, no signage.
But will it be on our site, our site to talk about places open to access?
Yeah. Yeah, actually...
I would anticipate so, because the...
But, you know, people don't go on it. There's a lot of places around here where you can...
No, I understand that. I understand that. I just, I don't, I don't really, I don't really care to have people walking by, you know?
What if they're your neighbors?
That's okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, A, it'll be public, right?
How much distance is there from your house to the property line, or the right of way would be?
My house is like 10 feet from the property line.
I got you.
So, that's my concern. Okay.
I would just...
Go ahead.
I'd like to address that, and if there are other comments, we'll address those also. So, I think some of us in the room are used to when a piece of property is headed in this direction, there's a dedicated parking area, there's signage, it goes up on a website, there are trails, there are maps. That's not what this is. This piece of property is being purchased by the Water District to conserve the development rights essentially of the parcel, so that those water rights are protected. There has to be access to the property, because they are a public entity. They also need to gain access to the property that they're trying to protect. So, I probably caused this issue when I said the public access area. That wasn't my intent. It's not going to have a trail. It's not going to be constructed. There will be no parking. There will be no signage. It is not, it is not an easement that an easement holder is holding for the purposes of recreation.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody else would like to speak to this? Please come forward. Just name and address, and...
Hi, I'm Kelly McCoy. I live at 58 Shady Lane. I knew Ken, and he was a great guy, and I just want to say he wanted it for conservation, so I'm glad to hear that.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, any questions?
Of course.
Mr. Totti, the... Thank you. The mechanism that you're using to purchase the property, does it require it to be open to the public, public access?
So, the Dudzik estate, your neighbor, Mr. Dudzik, who passed away, his, his will was to put this land into conservation and to leave public access available. So, yes, that is part of what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay, thank you.
Now, on your parcel, the lake, you know, the district.
Yes, sir.
Do you allow public...
No, the, no. Our 90 acres is closed. There's a budding 40 acres with no excess other than, it's not a trail, because we're not constructing a trail. It's a 15-foot piece of property wooded.
So, ultimately, you'll be getting 73.4 acres of land.
Yes.
In this.
Yes.
How will people know where to stop walking?
Our property will be posted. The current district...
You'll have every 300 feet or whatever.
Yes.
No trespass.
Yeah. I'd like to add a couple of points, that if the district doesn't acquire the land, the Dudzik family may choose to do something else, and then it's certainly open to development. Then, it's definitely open to development, because that property is worth something if it's going to be developed. Conserving it goes a little bit beyond just the Swainslake Village Water District. As some of you know, this property contains the headwater of the Oyster River. This is a really significant, important piece of watershed in Barrington that we're trying to protect, and this is the best way that we can do it.
Yeah. Now, I know Mrs. Wayne's deed to the, your parcel...
Yes.
Requires that if you close the district down, it has to go to either the town of Barrington or the state of New Hampshire, correct? This conservation land.
That is correct.
Is this parcel going to be joined to yours, or is it going to remain a separate entity?
That's a question for my engineer. This is a separate, yeah, this is a separate parcel that would be owned by the Water District, not under the restrictions of the original Swain grant.
Right, that's what I'm concerned about.
So, if, so your concern is if the district goes away...
If you merged it with yours, then that would fall under the purview of the original deed, I would imagine.
But, it would violate the Dudzik request.
Okay.
I was like, you couldn't do it, because you're going to, you would not be able to honor the requests of the trust, as it...
That's true. You got the trust. Okay.
And Mr. Dudzik, the late Mr. Dudzik makes this request, because he spent his life as a forester for a Department of Environmental Safety. The guy spent all kinds of time out there, mapping wetlands, observing little frog egg sacs. I mean, he was a true environmentalist for his entire life, and that, this is his dying request, is we preserve this land, but also to leave that people can go out there and look at those same egg sacs that he was observing.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions?
Just refresh my memory. When, when the hearing was held in Concord, was that regarding this land?
Yes, that's the, you and I, and, and, yes.
And then, will there be a conservation easement on this? How do we make sure this is, like, this forever as we can make it?
So, please, please, thank you. Dwayne Hyde, Southeast Land Trust?
Hi, my name is Dwayne Hyde. I'm the land conservation director for the Southeast Land Trust, so I've been assisting the Swainslake Village Water District on this project, and helping get all the due diligence done, so it can get into their hands. And one of the funding sources we're using, which is the one, it sounds like you went to the hearing in Concord, is the Department of Environmental Services Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection, Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection Program. I may have screwed up the end of the trust fund. Thank you. The trust fund requires, when they fund a project, that the property be permanently conserved, and there are a couple of different mechanisms. A conservation easement is one mechanism. That's not the mechanism we're using on this particular project. The mechanism that's going to be used is a deed restriction that's held by the state of New Hampshire. That ensures that the property will be permanently conserved and remain undeveloped. So, that will be a deed restriction held by the state for this project. One of the reasons, Chris rightfully was being careful, is one of the things we have to be careful about when we're going before planning boards for approvals for these conservation projects, is this is an acquisition by Swainslake Village Water District. They're paying the Dudziks money. They're generously making a partial donation of value, but they are getting reimbursed for, for the value of this land, and nothing wrong with that. But, if we were before a planning board, and the planning board said, okay, we approve this boundary line adjustment, so long as the land is forever conserved, you have now devalued that land by that formal action by the town, and the land value is now, not, I wouldn't say zero, but next to zero. So, we try to avoid having formal conditions by a planning board saying it's for conservation. There will be conservation done through the state of New Hampshire. Okay? Is that helpful?
We had a situation where a large block, as you are aware, of land was, hopefully, I think the owner wanted to conserve it, but didn't do anything permanent, and that his wishes were not honored.
Yeah. And while I have the table here, and back to the access, the 15-foot right away, that was a request of the, of the Barrington Conservation Commission. That, that's why that's there. That was Doug Bogans here, sitting right next to me, and, you know, the commission made that a condition of their approval of town funding for the project.
With no path, no marking, it's unlikely people...
Yeah. And it really was designed for neighborhood. That's why the, the actual condition on the plan and in the agreement with the Dudziks, and in the easement that will be conveyed for that access will be no parking, no signage. So, it's really designed for just neighborhood use.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
So, I can kick out the public?
Well...
Well, there's no parking on any street in Barrington, so you can call the police.
No, I mean, it sounds beneficial. You know, you'll get conserved property there that'll never get developed.
Yep. Oh, sure. We have one more person who's waiting offline. Yeah, we're offline. You're online. Well, somebody's offline at the moment. Can you get her?
Her hand is up.
Text support, sorry.
He, she, me or she, I don't know.
The question in the chat, well, he's trying to see if a technical difficulty. Steve Diamond is an abutter on 219 France Road. He stated, "I support some kind of signage existing to label the public access easement. The various backlots under one ownership seem to be close to gaining access from Hall Road. I'm pleased to hear the future development is not the intention." And there is a gentleman also online that is raising his hand that would like to speak.
Sure. Oh, that's, that's me. My name's Bob Dudzik. Ken was my brother, and I just wanted to thank Dave Totti and Dwayne Hyde for being there in person to represent, you know, what we are trying to do, which is conserve the land. So, I appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great. Nobody else on public comment? Close public comment this time. Any comments by the board? Final comments before we take a vote on the notice of decision? Did you have some comments, Chris?
No, I've said enough.
Is there a motion to grant the notice of decision?
I'll make a motion to grant the notice of decision on...
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Shepherd. Roll call, please.
Shepherd eye.
Napa.
Kepi yellow eye.
Tess, your eye?
Wuscalaw. Thank you. Enjoying it?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, five-minute break?
Yeah.
Sure.
Wait, before we take a... I just want to make a comment before we take a break, and this could possibly breed in, bleed into the break. The next item on the agenda is the zoning amendments. I know that we had passed out some information from legal counsel, and I discussed it with the chairman, but the, it's up for the board to decide if you want to go into a non-public meeting to discuss that. If you do, we can at that time go to the, if you want to take a break, and then go into that. Does every, does...
Well, first of all, does everybody think we're even, like, just research?
Because if, if we, if we do, we just have to motion in for, to go into non-public. You can go to the restroom, and we can go back to do that, if you want.
Yeah, it's like to go to the restroom.
Well, I meant...
To merge.
Okay, we're in the break, but sure. We're here for discussion of the zoning.
Okay, I'm ready.
Motion to come out of non-public?
Seconded, roll call.
Yeah.
Aye.
That'll be the other one.
That's yours.
That's the line.
Okay, what's next then?
Um...
Just go right to it. This is public here.
Yes. So for the zoning amendments, I want to read each of the proposed warrant article into the record, open, public comment, close, public comment, or to have any discussion and/or if there's any change, maybe we should do, if there's any, read the proposed warrant article, then if there's any changes, then we can do the public comment.
You can bring that sheet.
Oh, here.
We not, we, no, I think I can...
Share. Okay.
Okay.
So I, if you want me to elaborate on for you. So we're going with the proposed amendment number one. Are you in favor of amendment number one to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Substantially amend Article Six, the conservation subdivision, to require a four-step design review process to strengthen design criteria and yield plans for conservation subdivisions, to limit groups of units and parcels in conservation subdivision to four units, and to amend the lot sizes and setbacks and require appropriate buffers. Does the board want to have any discussion or changes on this?
Okay, gonna open it to public comment? Any public comment? Anybody online?
Oh, anybody online that's still with us that would like to speak?
EPSD.
Have public comment on this proposed zoning amendment? Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online for it.
There we go, no, close public comment. And we're gonna deliberate, we deliberated. Are there any changes you'd like to make?
He wanted, he wanted to do a change, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
The conservation subdivision.
Oh yeah, do you have that? We're just gonna go back to the original language that's in current language, right? Is that what you're talking about?
For Article One, for the first one?
Uh, that's six point two, point three, parentheses...
This is where I get frustrated.
One C.
Page thirteen.
Page thirteen.
Well, I kinda have that.
Page thirteen. Uh, we were just going to, it's six, two, three, parentheses, one, parentheses, C. We were just gonna go back to the current language in the zoning ordinance. In other words, you just add back in the detached.
I'm...
Because we thought we were gonna keep that in.
I'm...
Is that, everybody fine with that?
I don't know what you mean, where you want to put it. Page number thirteen?
Page thirteen, six, two, three.
Yeah.
Uh, one C. Land without lots, and for some reason, we got deleted detached, but we were supposed to put it back in as noted in our minutes, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Is this going to be, this text will be part of amendment one?
The, what you see as proposed amendment one, that will be on the ballot?
All, all of this will be on the ballot?
No.
That's supporting information.
That is supporting information, that's a sec, like, a reference document, so that will not be on the ballot?
On the voter education guide.
Yes.
The guide would have it.
The guide will have, I don't know, and the guide will have the explanation as well as the vote from the board, if, if it's still the same format as it was last year. It was the question and explanation, the vote from the board, and the board's, like, reasoning why, which is the backup documentation.
Exactly, but my question is, is all of this text going to be in the explanation?
That will be, so they have, no, but it's a backup document, it's a supplemental to the zoning ordinance?
So the zoning to it or something.
Yeah, so like, we had at the last deliberative session, where it said zoning, and then it had all the changes like this.
But what you're voting for right now is all the changes to Article Six.
Yes.
Can you just read it then, as it, so it'll say, as land without lots, as land without lots, for either detached or attached dwellings...
That is held in common.
Or for that is held in common interest by all homeowners residing in the subdivision.
Which is...
I just wanna make sure that the lined out red is what's going back.
So we're taking out the lined out red. Previously, we had taken out the thousand square feet, remember? That was in there, that had been added to.
You're putting the lined out red back in.
Yes.
We're putting it back in.
For six, two, three, one, C, but not six, two, three, four?
No.
So starting at six, two, one, there's no changes.
Single family.
Six, two, three, one, C.
We're adding back in...
Adding back in the red line item.
Yeah.
But when she says we're adding back our red line...
It's the original...
Oh, no, 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 just that one line.
Okay.
Just that one section, that's originally how it is.
Now, because we're reverting to the existing language, is this a change?
It's not a substantial change.
Okay, so you want us to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to delete the words either detached or from six, two, three, parentheses, one, parentheses, C.
I thought you wanted to add that back in.
Add them back in.
See, that's why I...
It's late, it's late, sorry.
That's what happened last time.
It's on first.
Yes, we're adding them back in, okay, six, two, three, parentheses, one, C.
Will remain as it originally is.
As it's currently in your zoning book.
Yes.
No change. Motion, second that. Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
John.
John.
Danny.
Yep. Aye.
Aye.
Tessie, aye.
Aye, okay.
And then...
I thought we didn't have to do, I thought we, when we discussed that, we were just gonna revert back, okay.
And then, I need to, hold on a second, um...
I'm sorry.
Vote to move this forward, for the vote, for the board to vote to move this forward to the ballot, to vote if you agree with as written with the backup documentation.
I propose to move amendment one forward to the ballot.
Is, are there any other changes like that?
As written here. Right here. With, with the approved amendment from the board.
Why'd you vote twice?
Hold on one minute.
They voted to take something else. And now we're gonna vote to...
Something in that room could kinda screw this up.
I've motioned to move...
Andy motioned to move it forward, can I have a sec?
Seconded here, roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Aye.
That's yours.
Second, that's here, Driscoll, aye. Okay, um, guess we're done, right? Start the procedure again.
Next one.
Proposed amendment number two, are you in favor of amendment two to the zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Increase the required minimum lot size in the general residential and neighborhood residential districts from eighty thousand square feet to one hundred and thirty thousand square feet, and increase the required frontage from two hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet per lot. I'm gonna open any, open it to public comment, public comment, please.
Parker Fairfield, one thirty, Old Concord, Turnpike Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. I love the community because we're a community, and I am strongly against amendment two. I wonder how many of the people on planning and zoning boards actually have almost two acres, an acre as it's, what is it, seven eleven, forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty feet? I wonder how many of us have almost three acres of land? I am lucky, I happen to have three acres, I just don't think it should be required for a new lot. I think eighty thousand square feet in the general residential and neighborhood residential districts would be appropriate. I also think that frontage, I don't know why we would need to increase the frontage requirement. I want our community to grow and not stagnate, and I see this as a stagnation type amendment, and I'm just firmly against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, still open to public comment here.
Jeffrey, one twenty-eight. How's that?
We can hear you.
Stephen Jeffrey, one twenty-eight for Answer Road. I'm in favor of this. I got eighty acres, but I see a lot of lots with only two acres, and people are really maxing them right out. I think more importantly, there needs to be enough developable land there, so that people aren't running into weather buffers and other obstacles. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody online?
Does anybody online would like to comment or make public comment for proposed amendment number two? We'll give you a moment to respond by either unmuting or raising your hand. Mr. Chairman, the folks online do not want to make a comment.
Any comments by zoning administrator?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I would like to propose to edit that in parentheses, we put acres. I mean, the public doesn't talk in square feet. People talk to me about acres, and I think it's, it would just clarify things to have eighty thousand square feet, and then in parentheses, one point...
Well, it's one point eight four acres.
Well, whatever it is.
Eighty thousand.
So in our table of uses, that's how it is, we could probably add to it.
I know, but it's still confusing, I think, to the general public.
An easy add. I would just put it in your guide.
Should be in the guide.
This is what people will see on the ballot.
Right.
And they won't necessarily take their guide, they might or they might not.
Okay.
So, I propose to...
Changing the zoning to suddenly start talking...
Are you gonna add a parentheses with the acres, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Just, just in what the voters see.
Yeah. Well, but what the voters see is what actually changes in the regulation here.
Right.
But just, it's just to clarify what they're voting on. I, cause I don't...
So when they read it, they know what eighty thousand square feet is.
Yeah.
I tell you, there's no resident that has ever talked to me about it.
A half an acre, right.
Yeah, I mean, most people don't know.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So, right, so we're not...
Eighty thousand square feet, one point eight four acres.
This is just a clarification, not a major change, right?
And only on the ballot.
Maybe I gotta say.
Nothing's changing in our amendment.
I, I think would be a, not a substantial change.
Right.
Just adding...
Okay, so we're gonna add that, that would be one point eight, three, six acres. It's going a couple of places. Andy will have the other one, since he proposed it, the hundred and thirty thousand square feet. It's two point nine...
Yeah.
Four, five, or something like that.
I didn't, and of course, I didn't bring the paperwork to...
Of course you didn't.
Me that breaks it out, but I can give it to you really quickly here.
Now, how, would this work? Just tossing this out, the conservation subdivision of thirty acres would normally allow sixteen lots, but this would push it to ten lots. So the conservation subdivisions would be much smaller in size.
Right.
That's a result.
The state changed it to one acre minimums, thank you very much.
Well, right behind here, instead of fifty-five, which originally approved, would be thirty-six, so it would be...
It's two, two point nine, two point nine eight four.
Can we have a vote?
It's two point nine eight four.
Two point nine eight four acres.
Two point nine eight four.
Two point nine eight four acres.
Is this one thirty of it?
Correct, yes. Get the other one? Yeah, close enough, okay. All right.
Motion to move it forward?
Yes, no, go ahead, I'm calling him asleep here.
I'll make a motion to move amendment two forward as amended.
Second, Barbara, second, roll call.
Let me say Shepherd, aye, cause I think that's what the community wants.
Well, we don't know what they want.
This is gonna be shown as supportive by the plan.
Oh, yeah.
What you're voting for is that you're supporting it.
Oh, yeah.
If you don't support it, don't vote.
I vote.
Andy?
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
Capello, no.
Tessie, aye.
Next, proposed amendment number three, are you in favor of amendment three of the Barrington's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend the table of uses to limit multifamily housing buildings in the general residential district, neighborhood residential, and village and highway commercial overlay districts to four units per building.
Four to one.
Yeah, I got that. Need to move...
Four to two, was it? No, one, just, just one, right?
Four to one.
Where's the vote?
All right, I'm not gonna hold. Okay.
Um, in the commercial overlay districts to four units per building, except in projects designated as workforce housing, where multifamily housing buildings are limited to five units per building. I'm gonna open that to public comment.
Parker Fairfield, one thirty, Old Concord, Turnpike, Barrington. In the spirit of live free or die, I'm pretty sure that this is a reduction, otherwise why would we be saying to change it to less? I don't understand if there's been issues in the past as to why there were too many per building. I still come back to saying that if it passes the planning board, and if there does need to come to the zoning board to make sure it, it follows the previously agreed upon, voted upon ordinances, I find this as a restriction to people's ability to go forward and live free or die, and I just don't like that. I think that the existing, previous voted on ordinances have led us to where we are today, and I like the community as we are today. Further restrictions, especially if amendment two passes, we become more of an island amongst ourselves, and that's not the reason I came here. Thank you.
Yeah, I think originally it was, people were concerned that in the residential area, the general residential, which is primarily single-family homes or duplexes, that somebody could put an eight-unit apartment building right next to you.
And those of us with three kids, when we need, according to amendment two, now I'm gonna need to go from almost two acres to almost three acres per house, and then I'm also gonna be restricted by going from X to less than X. I just wonder what the long-term community plan is, I'm sure we have a twenty-year plan, and I'm wondering if this is reflective in that twenty-year plan. It seems to me that our state is getting older, as far as demographically speaking, and why are we doing that? I'm a growing company holder, you drive by me all the time on Route Four, Ultra Geothermal, and I can't find staff as it is, and then I have people driving from an hour away, and that's not tenable, because they have to be at my shop at six AM, and then I drive up to an hour and a half. So some of them are spending five hours... So some of them are spending five hours a day on average, well, no, at the extremes, four hours a day or three hours a day in the car. And this makes my livelihood more difficult. It makes profitability and therefore forces people to move out of the town so that wealthier people can come in. And is that really what Barrington is or is that what Rye is? And I didn't try to move to Rye. I tried to move to Barrington. And so that's at the crux of the matter for me. I just, I, I'm curious how many of the town members are going to actually think this is a problem. They're going to think it's a problem when the planning board is behind it and you guys are on planning board and recommend, you know, recognize it. Most people, they don't come. They're not here in the audience. And so when they see the quote unquote seal of approval of planning board, well, then they're going to be behind it. And it's much more difficult to undo an ordinance than it is to do a new one. I know I was on planning board in Denmark, Maine. So I'm just against creating ordinances for the sake of creating them or modifying them for the sake of modifying them. I'm just a small government guy. Thank you.
Thirty-one percent of our houses are assessed at lower than $350,000. So we've got that lower segment pretty well covered. Problem is we got everything being built is from $700,000 to $1 million right behind us.
Sure. But John, when you just.
Off topic here. This is, the point of this is, it's not a tit for tat. It's allow public comment, make the comment and then the board.
And John, this is a quick rebuttal to your last comment. It may be off topic, but you just ensured that you're going to drive your property value up by voting for amendment two. Because it takes a lot of money to buy three acres versus two. So recognize that. You may say it's X. You just forced that X value up. So that's my reason I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments online or?
Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment for proposed amendment number three? If you would like to, please unmute yourself or raise your hands. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against amendment number three for public comment.
Okay, here we go. For the comments by the board. Now I'll make a motion to move amendment three forward. Okay. Roll call.
I'll say. I'm going to say no.
Aye.
Can I add a point of clarity?
Yeah.
This doesn't restrict density. It's numbers of units in a building. It's an optics thing. It's looks. It's a design. It's a design mechanism. It's four units to a building as opposed to eight units to a building. It's just a design. It doesn't change density. You can still get eight units. They're just in separate buildings for a particular look we were trying to strive for in town. Vote as you will. I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're voting for.
That's why it is specifically clarified that there can be five units.
For workforce.
For workforce housing.
For workforce housing.
You can have 20 units in a development.
But this.
You're saying one structure though.
That's a different thing we'll talk about later. This is, for this one.
So if you were, if we were going to have a 20-unit thing, it's, now it's just five.
Five different buildings. That's a different.
Yeah. So it's, is that my vote? I'm going to vote yes.
But that's lumping two.
You should just let them know here.
I'm going to vote yes.
Let's not fight.
Hold it. John, well, that's my frustration.
My god.
This is crazy.
John.
Yes.
Way to order.
Go ahead.
You have already had.
I had voted. I voted yes.
Multiple people that have voted. You're having a separate discussion over there and, um.
It's okay. I got it.
But can we stay on point?
Shepherd, aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
This is the same one? Aye.
Same one.
Okay, aye. I didn't change.
All right. Are we taking a break to have a discussion before the next one or?
Why?
You guys? Okay. There was a point of clarification, right?
It's been that way since the beginning. So I don't know.
Original language that only one per lot, but I don't think it says that now. It's just saying only one.
Multifamily housing buildings come into four units per building. No, you're correct.
Yeah.
Except in.
That was removed, I think.
The other one, one. I'm sorry.
There was another proposed change to limit one unit per lot.
Right.
Okay. I thought you lumped them together and I'm not blaming you.
Okay.
All right. Proposed amendment number four.
Did everybody, how did the vote go now?
I have a comment. Do you want it before or after public? Um, I, I would like to see a spell out where it says district, to spell out shoreline protection district. I just think when voters get in, they don't know what district means. It should say shoreline protection district. Anyone have any objections to that?
No. No, good point.
Oh, right here. I, for district, I put shoreline protection.
Shoreland. All right. Are you in favor of amendment number four to the Barrington zoning ordinance proposed by the planning board? And then article 11 to clarify the shoreline protection district. Is that what the wording was? Restrictions on septic systems and the exemptions from those restrictions. Yes, sir. Any question?
Just the 1133 removed.
Correct.
I apologize. Um, just the note of the removal of 1133. So the documents that might have been handed out had that still in there, the 1133.
So it should be noted that 11.
Three is removed and. Eleven three.
Wasn't it 1131?
One.
Not 1131 was removed, renumbering.
Oh, we had a different one.
Oh, sorry.
1133.
Yep. All right. I apologize.
I just want to make sure we're all, we're all looking at different documents, but we're sure.
Too many pieces of paper here.
The, um, the public has a document. I want to make sure they know what we're voting.
Okay, we're going to open this to public comment. Amendment four. Uh, anybody online?
Does anybody online, um, like make public comment for the proposed amendment number four? If so, please take yourself off mute or raise your hand to make public comment and we'll give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against amendment.
Is there a motion to move, uh, this amendment forward?
I'll make a motion to move this forward.
Seconded. Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
Seconded. Priscilla, aye. Five oh. Okay. Proposed amendment number five. Are you in favor of amendment number five? The Barrington zoning ordinance is proposed by the planning board as follows. Amend the table of uses to remove nursing facilities as a permitted or by conditional use permit the general residential and neighborhood residential districts and to allow it by special exception instead of conditional use permit the highway, commercial overlay, um, district, district overlay. Okay. Any discussion? Any additions? No. Public comment?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against a proposed amendment number five for public comment? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to, um, speak for or against proposed amendment number five.
Okay. Uh, closing public comment. Is there a motion to move, um, five forward? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Move along, folks.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
Priscilla, aye. Five zip again. Okay, proposed amendment number six. Are you in favor of amendment six to the Barrington zoning ordinance proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend the table of uses to remove footnote 14 prohibiting the use of recreational vehicles as a primary use of a property and amend article 3.1 point, uh, 3.3.1 to allow recreational vehicles to be occupied as either a primary or an accessory use of a property for up to 180 days per year under certain conditions. Yes, very wordy. I'll open that to public comment.
Opening public comment online for proposed amendment number six. If you would like to speak for or against this amendment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against this amendment.
Okay. Closing public comment. Is there a motion to, um, advance proposed amendment number six? I'll make that motion. Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Mr. Napp. Roll call, please.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
Five zip again. I think we're losing them. They've fallen asleep to my right. Proposed amendment number seven. Are you in favor of amendment seven of the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend article 4.2.2 parentheses five to remove the ability to exceed 50,000 square foot maximum non-residential building size in the village district through the issuance of a conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board before we begin?
Certainly may.
Okay, um. I wanted to discuss with the board tonight. Um, I know that I notified by email as well, but also, um, wanted to see the feelings and the consideration of combining proposed amendment number seven with a proposed, um, number, number eight, um, due to the square feet, um, for non-residential building size consistency. I was asked to bring that up tonight to, um, see the planning board's feeling on that. So I don't know if you want to address that now or you still want to like do the public comment and that sort of thing, but I want to make sure that was noted. Thank you.
Raised by the town administrator. He thought it would be easier for people if they were combined. That was only a suggestion. He wanted to know the board's feelings.
And it was brought up last night at select board and so it's my job to just say the select board was in favor of merging seven and eight plus, um, nine, 10 and 11. They're all definitions. Just thinking about voter fatigue.
Yeah, that's the issue, I guess.
If I may, um, for the definitions part, um, I don't see any issue with that as well, but, um, just to note that one of the definitions, item number 10 is not just a definition. It's a definition as well as clarifying language for 9.3.1. Of course, it's up to the board to decide if you want to, um, combine those three together. But I just wanted to point that out, that that, there's additional information there for the definition.
Only combine nine and 11 instead of nine, 10 and 11.
It's up to the board to decide what they would like to do, but there's more than just a definition. Yes.
I know we're not there yet, but that's where I was.
I know. It's, it's just kind of the lateness around combining items is not really ideal. I don't, I'm, I'm amenable to it, but does this mean we have to renotice it?
No, it does not. It does not have to be renoticed. We had asked our attorney as well. It does not need to be renoticed.
Last year, we did some. Yeah, last year we did some bundling as well. And the concern is like the nine and 10 one, if you change the definition but not in the article itself, you know, so if they both pass together, it's easier. As opposed to voting twice, if they go in different directions, there's a confusion. You get one definition changed but not changed in the article. A thought process. That makes sense.
So the procedure to move forward, um, if we want to go, that you support seven and eight and then, um, as written, and then if you want to make a motion to combine them or not to combine them. I don't know if that's adding too many steps.
Okay, so we'll do seven and eight and then discuss the combining.
Thank you.
Okay, so proposed amendment, I didn't read this yet, did I? Proposed amendment number seven, are you in favor of amendment number seven? Number seven to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows. Amend article 4.2.2 parentheses five to remove the ability to exceed 50,000 square foot maximum non-residential building side, size in the village district through the issuance of a conditional use permit. I'll open it to public comment. Please come forward. Name and address, please. For the record, name and address.
Oh, yeah. Stephen Jeffrey, 128 France Road.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I appreciate seeing that you recognize that a conditional use permit can't be used for a prohibited use. And other than that, it, it's, the way it's written here, it doesn't seem entirely clear to the voters what you're actually doing. But I'll leave that up to you guys to figure out.
Okay.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment number seven? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. We will give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against this amendment.
Okay, I'll close public hearing. I'll comment. And is there a motion to advance amendment number seven? Are we merging them or not? We're going to take a vote on merging after we approve seven and eight. According to the.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Person in charge here.
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, so we're approving seven and eight right now.
Nope. Then after.
I second it. Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye. Priscilla, aye.
Andy and Scott. Sorry. I knew it was Scott.
Okay, it passed five zero. Proposed amendment number eight. Amend article, uh, number eight of the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows. Decrease the maximum non-residential building size for buildings that are part of the planned unit development that are permitted by conditional use permit in the town center zoning district, 70,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet. And this is a public comment.
Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment on the proposed amendment number eight? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand for public comment. We'll give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against this proposed amendment.
Close public comment on amendment eight. Is there a motion to advance amendment eight?
Make a motion to advance amendment eight. I'll second it.
Andy. Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
Priscilla, aye. Now, we can, uh, entertain a motion to merge seven and eight.
Make a motion to merge seven and eight.
I'll second it.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
Priscilla, aye. Okay. We've been merged. I'm going to miss link. Five zip on that. Five zip on. Okay. Next, proposed amendment number 10.
We're number nine.
Oh. Sorry. Told you I'm falling asleep. Proposed amendment number nine. Are you in favor of amendment number nine to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend article 18 definitions to add definition of steep slopes as hillside with a grade of 15% or more and a very steep slope as a hillside with a grade of 25% or more. I'm going to open that to public comment.
Opening public comment online for proposed amendment number nine. If you'd like to speak for or against this amendment, please raise your hands or unmute yourself. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against this amendment.
Uh, closing public comment. Is there a motion to advance amendment number nine?
Make a motion.
Second. Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Napp, aye.
Capello, aye.
Test your eye.
I was.
Andy and Bob. Just a lie. Driscoll, aye. Okay, done. Okay, next one. Proposed amendment number 10. Are you in favor of amendment number 10 to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend Article 18 definitions to complete definition of hydric A soils and hydric B soils and in certain stead definitions of poorly drained soils and very poorly drained soils from the quote site specific soil standards for New Hampshire and Vermont, quotes, parentheses, as amended, yeah, close quote, as amended as published by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Further amend Article 9.3.1 regarding the edge of prime wetlands to replace reference to hydric A soils with very poorly drained soils. Open public comment.
Opening public comment online. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment number 10? If so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. We will give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment number 10.
Closing public comment. Is there a motion to advance amendment number 10?
Make a motion to advance amendment 10.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Shepherd, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Capella, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Driscoll, aye. Proposed amendment number 11. Are you in favor of amendment 11 to the Barrington zoning as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend Article 18 definitions to amend the definition of a butter to coincide with the statutory definition which was amended by the legislature in 2024 to define the term directly across the street or stream. Open public comment on this?
Opening public comment online as well for the proposed amendment number 11. If you would like to speak for or against this application, please raise your hand or put yourself off mute. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to speak for or against this amendment.
Okay. Closing public comment. Is there a motion to advance amendment number 11?
Make a motion to advance number 11.
I'll second it.
Shepherd, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Capella, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Driscoll, aye. Zip again. Okay, now we have to decide if we want to merge any of these definitions. Which ones? Because number.
It could be nine, 10, and 11, correct?
Well, or it could be nine, 10, and 11.
I
I don't think 10 should.
Then 10, or merge 10 with it.
You have a comment? Just got to reiterate what you said.
Reiterate, I don't see any issue with combining definitions. However, number 10 proposed amendment also had, in addition to a definition, also changes or, excuse me, amends Article 9.3.1 to reference hydric A soils with poorly drained soils to change the language to match the rest of the zoning ordinance. So I personally it's separate from a sole definition.
Nine and 11 only if you're making a proposal to amend them.
Okay, I'll make that a motion. Make that motion. Motion to merge amendment number nine and 11.
I'll second it.
Shepherd, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Capella, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Driscoll, aye. But they do.
No, nothing.
Oh, okay. Well, I was trying to keep me in line tonight, so.
You made that comment about, not unless it's amended. I don't think, oh, we're going to amend it again?
Who made that? Who made that motion?
I think it's the motion in the second, I'm sorry.
If he made the motion.
You did.
I did. You made the motion, okay. Don't blame me.
Andy second?
No.
Joyce, Joyce did, right? Okay. Any comments by the planner at this point? Moving to the petition warrant articles?
Yep.
Okay.
I will.
Does the petitioner read them? Is that tradition?
I think the board, so we've received four petition zoning amendments. The petition zoning amendment should be treated similar to, as far as public hearings, similar to the planning board recommended zoning amendments in that to read the proposed amendment into record. Open public comment, closed public comment. The board can discuss anything, but however, no changes can be made. There's still request of vote being made by the planning board. Regardless of the vote, all four articles are moved to the ballot.
Okay, first proposed amendment. Shall the town vote, colon, to insert the bold text below to the zoning ordinance Article 4.1.2 lot frontage and Article 18 definitions of lot frontage, that being access to the lot shall not be by right of way across another owner's property. Do you like to speak to this? Oh, yeah, I'm opening public comment so you can speak to this.
Stephen Jeffrey. I kind of took this right from the Supreme Court decision, Harvey v. Barrington. You can't use a right of way to access property. You have to have frontage on a street. And a street has some particular requirements. And right of way on somebody else's property doesn't satisfy 67441. I provided some, you know, support for what I proposed. I don't think it's necessary for me to read through all of that.
No.
But it's pretty much consistent with state law, and I don't believe I'm changing anything. I'm just, in fact, with all of these I've proposed, just providing some clarity.
Okay. Is anybody online that would like to speak to this? I'm opening public comment. Well, we have opened.
Yeah. Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against the proposed zoning amendment? If you do, please unmute yourself or raise your hands. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, there's nobody online that would like to speak for or against this.
I'll close public comment. Is the board discussion on this?
So the definition of street, can I ask the applicant here? Where did this come from? It doesn't seem to be in state statute. It came from the court case.
Supreme Court decision.
From the Supreme.
Yeah. Harvey v. Barrington. Yep. Right up by the Christmas car and the spa. It's pretty clear with their language in the court case, their literal decision. You can't use a right of way over somebody else's property. Doesn't satisfy the statutory requirement, state law. And this is sort of a recurring issue. But finally, this is a case with the, you know, that involved Barrington. There's plenty of other cases where the same decisions have been made.
Anybody else?
I think the only other question I had on it was looking at the definition of a street where it talks about whether public or private. Where there, where there's a private road, all of those private roads potentially, it's a right of way.
Well.
In a lot down a private road, so how does that? I was just trying to make sure I understood where your test was here.
The problem is, there's no definition of a private road. Or subdivisions lay out how you would create what would be a private road that the town might accept later. It has, you know, pretty stiff requirements, standards that it has to be built to, but I think what's happening is a lot of these old accesses to properties are really right of ways. And somebody has called them a private road for whatever purpose, but they're not really a road or a street according to the statute. And, you know, and the state changed, has changed 67441 several times, or what, 20 years or so? And they've tightened it up for some of these loopholes. So it, it actually has to be a road, a street. It can't be a right of way on somebody else's property. I don't know if you understand the distinction, but, you know, roads are like between two property lines.
Right.
A right of way is going to be on top of somebody's property, and a right of way may not even necessarily have a specified location.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt? Yes.
I mean, that right of way, 125 is a right of way.
That's right.
It's not, your definition of what you want to call a road is not a definition. It's your definition, and it may be appropriate in some instances, but almost every road is a right of way.
Correct.
It's a different type of right of way.
Right.
It's a different class of road.
That's right.
But they're technically almost all, even if they're owned in fee by someone else, you still have a right to pass and repass.
That's correct.
Right. But this includes over another person's property, which distinguishes it from a street that has a right of way.
Well, what if the center line? If these roads were not taken by the town like as a subdivision?
Well, I think the law allows for that.
Yeah, but the owner does have rights. They have certain rights. If the town goes into clear trees within that right of way.
Well, actually.
On the pavement, they have a right to be notified.
That's, that doesn't cover everything. Some roads are different than that. There's a lot of variation. It's just assumed everybody has owns to the middle of the road, but that may not be the case.
No. Particularly the ancient roads of Barrington, right? Any other comments?
It was just a question. That was.
Okay. We're going to vote. Take a vote? I'll open public, oh, yeah, we got to close public comment. Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. We're done. Okay, is there a motion to?
Well, I don't know. We don't need to motion because it's not going to be on there, but
Roll call for.
If you would like to get a motion for
Support.
Support.
Yeah.
If you support it, vote yes. If you don't support how it's written, no, I think that would be this way. That way I can document it correctly when I write it.
Hurry, it's over to me. Shepherd, aye.
I'm struggling with clarity around it.
Yeah.
That nay, just because I really want to better understand the question that I was asking on it.
Yay for me because of the Supreme Court.
Tess, your nay.
Driscoll, nay. That's three, two?
Three to two?
And two, three? Against?
Two, four, three, against. Oh, no.
I can't, ma'am. Sorry.
You don't get to vote, James.
No. In my head, I get a vote.
Okay, we're going to move on to propose, the second proposed amendment. Shall the town vote, colon, to add the text below to the zoning ordinance of Article 9.6 special use permit? A special use permit shall not establish a use specifically prohibited by this ordinance. I'll open it to public comment. Recognize, Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you. It's improper to use a special use permit which is a conditional use permit for a prohibited use. I mean, that's pretty standard land use regulations. I took this language from Fremont. I think Exeter has something similar. And, you know, the planning board, the zoning board, and the selectmen can't approve something that's prohibited by the ordinance. When you do that, you're changing the ordinance, and you really don't have that authority. Our regulations could be written different if what was sort of being, have been allowed, but you can't do it the way it's written out by using a special use permit. And it when it says a use not otherwise permitted, that doesn't mean a prohibited use. If it meant a prohibited use, you'd write it that way. And, you know, we don't allow fill. We don't allow dredging. And, you know, the whole purpose of our zoning ordinance is to protect wetlands and their buffers. Now, also, the state statute requires that an innovative land use control be in the master plan and reflect what's being done in the zoning ordinance here. But it doesn't even seem that this special use permit was enacted according to the statutes. You know, overall, I tried to make this as simple as possible. But in any case, you know, I've watched the planning board grant special use permits on individual lots. The planning board has absolutely no authority over an individual lot. The only place you could even do something like this is in a subdivision or site plan, and it's supposed to provide flexibility, you know, for the planning board to properly approve something. But again, you can't just violate the zoning ordinance and allow prohibited use. You know, there's some properties that, you know, a person may not be able to develop, and that's unfortunate, but maybe they should have picked a better property to buy. You know, the, if you look at the intent and purposes of the wetlands ordinance, it's to protect these areas and preserve them. You know, digging them up and covering in asphalt is clearly not the intent of the regulations.
I just want to be clear because I think this is not in the order on page. This is the special use permit shall not establish a use specifically prohibited by ordinance, which I have as number four.
Yeah.
Any other comment?
Do you want to go on? Is anybody online would like to make public comment on the proposed amendment? Petition zoning amendment for a special use permit shall not establish use specifically prohibited by this ordinance? If so, please raise your hand or put yourself off mute. We'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to comment on this proposed amendment.
And ask the zoning administrator if he has any comments on this?
My only comment is that in my short time with the town, this topic has been brought up multiple times, and both legal opinion and previous boards have not found any issue with it. And so it's been the same way. It's the opinion and the advice of our council that it's an innovative land use and it's appropriate to be in the planning board's purview.
More comments? Is there a motion to?
There's no motions.
It's just.
Do you just have to take a roll call?
Roll call, just a roll call. Support. A support vote. Yes?
No.
Couldn't hear.
Said no.
Shepherd, no.
These were slim papers.
Use that mic, too.
Knapp, aye. Yeah, I mean, the way it's written, it looks like it should be an aye, but, you know, we're hearing that people need to have some relief, so what about no on it?
Tess, your no.
Driscoll, no.
Andy was a yay. Andrew was a yay.
I was a nay. Andy was a yay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. He was, yep.
Okay, next one. Shall the town vote to add the text below to the zoning ordinance Article 18 definitions? Street. A street shall not include a right of way over another owner's property. Going to open it to public comment?
It's me again. You know, the reasoning is the same on this one. You know, I've kind of watched, you know, some of these things over the years. There was a proposal to make the space between any stone walls in town a road. Well, that pretty much covers the entire town. And I've heard there's been an effort to make every driveway a street. And, you know, this is kind of insane what's, what's happening. But anyway, you know, based on the court case against Barrington, a right of way over somebody else's property does not qualify as a street. You know, these private easement right of ways, you know, they can come and go, they can be moved, changed. My parents bought. My parents bought a lot. Well, they bought a lot on the street and a lot behind them. The guy had a right of way. So my parents actually created a different location. It's still on the maps. People think it's still a right of way. It's not a right of way because my family owns both lots. You can't have a right of way over your own property. And it certainly is not a street. Now, if my family wanted to develop that property, they'd probably have to merge the properties so that all the lots had road frontage. But anyway, you know, I provided as much kind of useful information as I could with these. I mean, I hope you read through it and consider it. If somebody can come up with an RSA or even a court case that refutes any things I've said here, I'd love to see it. I've spent an awful lot of time looking at court cases, and I've spoken to or had a lot of interaction with the New Hampshire OEP or other state planners, and this is not just something I dreamed of, all of these. And I found some typos in the zoning ordinance. Do you guys want that?
Yeah, somehow that got drawn.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Things get lost when they get retyped.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online like to comment? Are you finished?
I just had a... I know, I'll wait for public comment, I guess, to ask my question.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment for a street shall not include a right of way over another owner's property? If so, please raise your hand and put yourself off mute, and we'll give you a moment to do so. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment.
Okay, I'll close up a comment at this time, and we're gonna take a sense of the board vote.
Oh, sorry, I had a question.
Oh, sure.
I was just curious because, oh, Steve, I just had a question, another question for you, because it tied, in my mind, I connected it back toward the first one. So my question was in this where it says a street shall not include a right of way, and then when I looked at your definition of a street, I didn't see anything noting a driveway on there or travelway, so I just was trying to...
When you start throwing all those things in there, it gets muddy.
I know, that's why. And that's our job is to decipher muddy and then allow people to vote appropriately on that.
You know, a private easement right of way cannot be a street by law. The courts have said that, and the law itself says that, you know? And it also says that the town can't grant a variance for that. The planning board can't override it. You're stuck with state law. You can't change it.
There was a article, zoning article, four or five years ago to try to define street.
Yeah.
Remember, the whole town was in an upper work.
Yeah, it was probably me.
We thought every little path would be defined as a street.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, like I said, there have been attempts made to do that, and, I mean...
Well, there were torches and pitchforks back then.
Yeah. Well, there was a lot that was developed down by Swains Lake, and it was initially, I spoke to the building inspector at the time, said it was a Class 6 road. It was shown on the official town map and recorded in the registry. There ain't no such thing. Then it became, did it become?
Class A trail?
No, no. Oh, a range road or something, anyway. And I've asked for years, I would come before the select board, and I bring them a map and say, how much frontage does this lot have and on what road? They can't answer me because it doesn't have any road frontage. It has a right of way they can't use, and they're running across the neighbor's property. And then somebody says, well, it's a right by adverse possession. Well, if the courts had said that, but you actually have to go to court, and the courts have to make that decision. You can't just assume that's the case. I mean, they could have permission to drive across a neighbor's property, which is perfectly fine, but that doesn't meet the statutory requirements for a building permit, you know? And you get in all kinds of other issues, you know, with fire and police, you know, response. You know, they put a house or rebuilt a house on the island in Menham's Pond. It doesn't have road frontage, but they argue it does, you know? And they're driving across two other people's property just to get to a place where they can take a boat out, you know?
They took the dam down, right?
Oh, yeah, you ought to see it.
Maybe they do have a road now.
Not quite. But, you know, actually, you know, if you want to come look at it, it's really pretty spectacular. It'll be dry into next summer. It's really neat to take a walk around.
You invited us to walk on your property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Officially or unofficially?
You have a nice lock there, I remember.
Yeah, have you been on it?
Conservation commission had a lock years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Right after you had trouble with your forester, I believe.
Oh, it could have been, yeah. He stole a bunch of timber. Yeah, yeah. And the police wouldn't even accept a complaint.
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you. Does the zoning administrator have any comments on this before we proceed to a...
No, I guess I defer on the side of I don't see a problem it solves. Again, I don't, I can't, in my mind, rationalize if I drive across 125 and it's a right of way, but I can't somehow call it a street by this new term. I struggle with accepting the rationale.
But it is consistent with state law?
What part?
The amendment.
That a street shall not include a right of way over another's property? I don't, I can't speak to that. I don't think it's...
I have a struggle with that, too.
I mean, 67441 specifically speaks to the process for issuing a building permit when you don't have frontage on a Class 5 or better road. So whether that's a private road, private right of way, public right of way, Class 6, a goat path, if you have legal access to your property somehow, I don't, you know, I don't see how you can restrict it with this language. If that's the intent, is to restrict building permits on those people's particular properties that don't have frontage on a Class 5 road, you'd be directly, you know, in contrast with 67441 that spells out how to give building permits on roads that do not have frontage on Class 5 or better roads. I don't...
Okay, any more comments before we take a sense of the board vote?
Shepherd, yes.
Now, aye.
Can't be all aye.
That's your nay. Driscoll, nay.
Still have problems with the owner's property? What is another person's property that I think many roads have? So I guess that is three to two?
Three ayes, two nays.
Two. Okay. Last one.
Last one.
Let's get back to... Does the town planner have any comments at this point?
You're doing great, Joe. Almost there, almost there.
Of course, I lost my, I think the only thing we get to do. You don't have any new business, right?
We have, we got one more.
You got one more?
We've got one more.
All right, forgot about that.
I got you, I got you on this one. Okay. Petition zoning amendment, the proposed amendment reads, shall the town vote to insert the bold and underlined text below to zoning ordinance, Article 18 definitions, for a lot of record? Lot of record and its bold and underlined unimproved lot that is part of a...
Sorry. Open it to public comment, please.
See you again?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, again, I believe this, I tried to add some clarity to this, and it kind of came to my attention with a lot that it was a non-conforming lot. It was too small, it had a building on it. And previous town official declared it was a lot of record and exempt from the zoning ordinance, skipping over all of Article 5. Now, a lot of record does not include improved property with houses on it. It was an attempt made to kind of make all pre-existing lots lots of record, and I explained to the planner then that as soon as the planning board approves a subdivision, those are lots of record. So you can't just exempt everything in town, and that would really just undermine the whole intent of the ordinance. But if you read through, I don't know if it's Article 5, a lot of record always comes up as unimproved, because once you've improved it, it's either conforming or it's non-conforming. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff that is going to apply to it. And so again, I'm just adding some clarity so that people understand that in approved lots, not a lot of record. You know, my property was created around 1850, near as I can tell. I can't make an argument that I'm exempt from everything because I predate zoning and, you know? So this, that was just kind of a ridiculous thing. And lots of record aren't exempt. Anyway, you know, non-conforming properties can't be made more non-conforming, and that's exactly what happened with this property. It became much more non-conforming, basically without even a discussion about how that was happening. It was just allowed without any documentation. So anyway, again, I'm trying to just add some clarity so that people aren't confused. Can I switch them?
Go ahead.
What would you say your setbacks are on your lot? What, my setbacks are? What your setbacks are currently for your lot? I know that I meet the side, I'm sure I meet the front. Not meet current, I'm saying what do you think of the legal setbacks on your lot as it exists today? Are they 20-foot setbacks, 40-foot, 50-foot? No, I think I meet the current setbacks, certainly on one side, and my other side is like a third of a mile or something. I guess to clarify, if you wanted to build something on your property, what would you believe that the setbacks you'd be beholden to? Well, actually, when I've done a number of things with my property since I owned it, there was a series of additions on the back of the house. There was a porch on two sides. I removed them, I rebuilt, or I built an addition on the back, which basically fit into the footprint of the original house. I built a garage that's smaller than the cape and the attached garage that was there. I had a 30 by 40 barn that collapsed one winter. I replaced it with a 24 by like 36 barn, but I actually had to prove to the building inspector that I met the current, the applicable setbacks. My property wasn't grandfathered from setbacks. Nobody's property is. State law says, you know, any current change in a property has to comply with all of the current regulations, all the applicable regulations. So, you know, I get a little frustrated when I see, you know, town officials excusing people from the regulations for some phantom reason. And I don't want to just drag a whole lot of specific cases in front of everybody. That's not appropriate. Sure. I think everyone's nuanced. I was just curious what your setbacks were you thought were on your property currently, the ones, you know, that was my question. Well, Ted required me to, he wanted me to prove I wasn't in the wetland buffer. Okay, well, first of all, I was taking up less space in the building prior to that, and...
But do you believe you have wetland buffers on your property?
Oh, I sure do have wetlands and wetland buffers, yeah, yeah. And I'm mindful of that. You know, wetlands are a horrible place to build stuff. You know, the lot across the street from me, they didn't even do the wetlands delineation properly. I demonstrated how it was done wrong, and the board just let it go. And one of those houses, they've had to replace the floor twice now, and their septic system wants. Thank you.
Okay, public comment's still open. Anybody online?
There's nobody online.
Okay, closing public comment. I'd like the board to discuss whether they would like to support this or not.
The, my only comment on this is even having gone through Section 5, what I see happening is you could potentially acquire a lot, have an intention to do, like, you could take down a building, have an intention to do something, maybe you have a medical event or something that doesn't do it, you don't do it within the timeline allotted by the existing zoning, and all of a sudden, now you have a lot that's a faro lot that can't be, may not be able to do anything with. Because based on what you're saying, so say somebody buys a lot that is an unimproved lot, they buy it before this with the intention of going in and doing something, and then all of a sudden, the zoning changes, and now that lot is, now, some lots, you just cannot meet any of the requirements of, and you would not be able to meet that. That's what I'm saying. You've now created this...
Well, that's the way it is now. That doesn't change anything. Any lot in town, you have to comply with whatever the applicable regulations are. That's it.
Public comment is still open?
There's some exceptions.
I take issue. You know, if you look at the subdivision back here and you buy a lot, and in 20 years you decide to put a house on it, you have to meet the requirements when the subdivision is approved by the planning board. You don't have to meet the future subdivision regulations of three acres because it's a conservation subdivision, and the regulations are vastly different. If you're talking about... Pardon me?
The man subdivision is vested.
Right.
That's what protects your rights.
Right, but that language by putting unimproved doesn't say about vested or not vested.
With the fact that one is the other.
And if you're looking at legal lots of record, whether improved or not, if they weren't approved by the planning board, they have to meet current zoning, improved or unimproved. It makes no difference. But if something was approved by the planning board in 1992, that's the appropriate regulations for that lot to meet, whether it's improved or not. And to put the unimproved in there, I think the situation Andy brings up is, comes into play.
And that's why when I read that, and I had read through 5, and I had to go back and pull out my reference, and it's 5.3, Parents 4, where it talks about a non-conforming use that's been discontinued for a period of one year shall not be resumed or replaced by any other non-conforming use. Now, if we're saying that the lot has to meet today's standards, it's now a non-conforming use, even though, which speaks to the fact that a not, it's a non-conforming use has been discontinued.
Then you have to go to the ZBA to get relief.
Right. Which, if that's the case, then I, like, I go back to the one where I was the one lone supporter of the special use permit, and I voted in favor of saying no there, but by doing what we're talking about here with this, that means they can't get relief then from the ZBA, so then why would I want to vote in favor of that as opposed to it the other way? So why would I want to be the one yay there? That's where I say when I'm concerned when I read this, that I, it creates a situation that doesn't allow an existing lot of record to move forward. Somebody, right, somebody buys it, has it, sits on it, you know? Like, if I bought a lot for my son now, and it was a lot that was created 10 years ago, and zoning changes, he could, he potentially could not develop that lot.
Tell me, tell me more about this lot.
I don't have, I'm just throwing it out there... I, I don't have, I'm just throwing it out there that I buy a lot that was created 10 years ago. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to make sure I.
Doesn't change anything, whatever.
Hey, we're gonna get a vote to support this or not? Shepherd was no into his microphone, if they can reach you.
Shepherd, no. For, for the reasons stated, I'm gonna vote no.
I don't think it clarifies much additional, so no.
That's your no.
Driscoll, no.
Thank you very much.
What else do we have to do?
We have new business?
No new business, motion to adjourn was made by.
I'll second it.
The bylaw, roll call.
Have I?
Can't be all I.
Tessie, your eye.
Driscoll, uh, hey, can I be one no again?